We begin with the United States of America. And the Imperial Department of Justice Foundation, under our individual vote, with liberty and justice for all. The note, our counselor, Bernie, will be in attendance, and Councilor Pearl will be here in about ten minutes. All right, I will open up public comment at six zero two. We have anyone from the audience, any residents that would like to speak, I would encourage you to come to the podium. Can you come to the podium, Melman?
Hi, my name is Dale. And the one concern that I do have is recovery homes, whatsoever, house, wherever, I'm not sure which one it's called. And the fact that there's a challenge on, neither that that comes out of my tax money. Why me?
Sort of indirectly does if they apply for general assistance.
That's what I meant, yes.
They do get general assistance to live there.
And is that like they rent a room and we're paying, well, owns the building for rent?
Yes.
Ma'am.
So it's the, pardon me?
Oh, so we also had this on our discussion for our agenda on the February twenty sixth meeting.
Yes.
So we also have it in your recording on our YouTube channel, it's under our Facebook page.
I looked, I didn't see anything about the recovery.
Okay, well, I can also contact or get with you after this meeting if you'd like to ask any further questions and keep down here.
So that we don't have to end up talking.
If you have any other comments.
You know, looks like you're doing it.
All right, thank you very much for coming. There any other?
I'm in it.
Yeah. Just come on.
Hi, actually, my name is Megan Manning. I guess really a lot of our issues too is the oversight on these stuff, and we are going to pay general assistance. Do we have authority for oversight? It seems as though there's very little oversight. And then, in fact, do we have authority for the oversight?
Okay, I can also get with you afterwards and we can answer those questions for you.
And also, are there going to be more police presence in the areas, and do we have two thousand within our windows?
Thank you. We will be, we are currently looking into the matter.
It is a concern we've discussed at that length before one of the last meetings. So some of the questions we have, many people have had the same questions. But currently, it's stated, well, that not knowing how we can review what we had, what we talked about before.
We have the next one, it's.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I appreciate coming up. There's not much right now that we can do in the recovery homes. They're here, they're working it.
And they're here.
They're looking at it at legislation level, but we can help you with some of the information we've already gone over.
I would say see more oversight because I've seen a lot of the other people too, they found paraphernalia on the ground. It's happening in front of their own schools, our children.
Their chief of police is here, he's on top of it, he's watching it, they're patrolling it and watching it very closely, so.
I appreciate you, I understand the resources there, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you looking good.
That's true.
Thank you very much for being here.
Well, one more, I got a little comment on that.
Yeah.
We, we did discuss it back in February, but one of the things that you, you can do is contact. Our hands are basically, it boils down to our hands are basically tied at state federal level, so.
I don't think they were very forthcoming on the fact that we, nobody that I've talked to in town even knew that this was the thing that was something or we handing over. And he.
Happened.
There's nothing.
Right.
Because of them.
If our general systems fund are going to it, they have this, they have to, then we don't have any say with. And then when our general system.
Our hands are tied as part of us being able to look at the points to them. So what I was going to recommend is you should contact both your representative of the House and the Senate.
Yep.
And discuss it down, and I mean, that's where the, that's where the change. Change in pressure has to be put on. It's not, that's what we can really do here in town.
Yeah.
We're doing what we can.
And yeah, the more I look into it, I do understand that. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I.
Thank you, thank you, Megan.
Yes, sir. So, so people online to hear.
I've been here for a while. I've been paying taxes, my dad has been paying taxes here, I've given this town sixty thousand dollars up to this point in taxes. And it'd be a perfectly honest way, I haven't seen nothing. And now you got a situation like this, where we've just adopted two little boys, I don't want these people around them. I don't want my little boy looking out the front window on Main Street, all of a sudden, one of these people want to go and do it, they fix right there, and he says to me, Poppy, what are they doing? My wife has gone and I've gone through a lot of this stuff. We lost a lot of people in our lives. We spent a lot of our lives trying to get people there on this road that is not a guaranteed winning road. We give them everything in the world that they want. And I'm tired of it. I worked my whole entire life, my wife worked her whole entire life, we worked like tails off to own our house. And then we don't have a say in what goes on down here at all. That's not right. That's not the American way here. And your hands are tied. Why are your hands tied? Who sold that situation to? Who started the whole situation and sold the building to begin with? No answers.
I can answer, sir. If you'd like, a part of it is, it's at the state level, and it's nothing to do with us. We didn't sell the building. The owner sold the building and then returned it, make it into home, apartment house.
So the owner can oversee whatever the council or anybody that just helped can say, we are sorry for that.
I understand your frustration, I want you to understand that.
No, I don't think you do.
Well, that's fine if you don't believe what I'm telling you. But I'm telling you, I do understand your frustration. I brought this up to one of them once. So if you come to more meetings and want to listen to the twenty sixth meeting, you'll understand. I understand your frustration.
Say to you guys is, what you need to do is you need to take care of the people who've already taken care of us. And we. Such the vets, such as seniors.
And we, and I.
We're time on.
We're trying, we're trying, within the letter of the law, we can do, that's being governed was by the state. Where there's nothing we can do to touch that, what they're doing there. We've already looked into it inside and out. And there's not, nothing, there's nothing at this point we can do about it.
Right, if you want to rebuild over the.
I'm expressing my concerns, we need local citizens to do that, but there's nothing I can do.
What happens if something happens to somebody on the street that's minding their own business from one of these people? Then what?
It could happen.
Oh, well.
I appreciate it.
It's gonna be the same thing like it is in the whole United States now. You're gonna end up doing something when something bad happens and somebody dies.
Well, I will, so I'll address some of the consequences.
Thank you for nothing.
The, this council can only do with what has been presented over time. I'm zoning and everything else, or this is what passed prior to our involvement. Had we seen this coming, then we could have possibly done stuff in the past. We are looking forward to, we are in communication with this council as well. And they have been very forthcoming with everything. Now, this community has lost a lot of individuals to opiate overdoses. So I do not think that we want to create an environment where we don't welcome recovery. We have an ample police force that is able to patrol, keep an eye out, and are responsive to complaints. So if you see something, say something. And it will be thoroughly investigated. Right now, it's conjecture, and that doesn't do anybody any good. So they are here, they are residents, they are renting from that facility, so they are to be treated as if they are residents of Winter. So therefore, they do qualify for general assistance. So, you know, we are doing due diligence, we are watching out and looking out for the taxpayers of Winter. But at the same time, realizing that this is a problem, and we have been very proactive as a council to address this issue.
Thank you. We have any other comments? All right. I'll go ahead and close the public comment at six eleven. We'll move on to item thirty five, the discussion and consideration, not really related to new foreclosures for the town policy for tax required property. And I believe we have a Darren Heskey here from the owner of Homestead Realty, he'll give us some insight. We have ten properties that are currently being foreclosed on, six of which have homestead encumbrance. I believe the council has received these, and they are also included on the agenda packet. You can also notice the exempt codes listed under each of the details. So thank you, Mr. Heskey, for coming up here.
Anthony and I have discussed a list of ten properties that have been proposed on and up for potential for sale. And we're both in agreement that best option is to keep people in their homes, obviously. But if that doesn't come to fruition, then it's a possibility that any of the ten could go up for sale. As Anthony and I discussed, nine out of the ten, I would recommend for sale, or I feel that they are marketable properties. One is actually, in the real estate world, not considered to be real property because it doesn't own the land that it's, it's on. And so Anthony and I discussed a potential solution for that property, but. Again, I think Anthony and I are in agreement that keeping people in their homes is first and foremost. Obviously, it has to go by the letter of the law, but if it goes further, then obviously, it's about these things.
Yeah, so. I'm sorry?
Can you give us a response you got on property values?
Well, so this is the first step in the, in the process of determining how we're going to dispose of these properties. So under the policy, I bring you the list. We report on, as Darren just said, the marketability of these, and then you guys tell us to either to, yeah, go forth and try to sell these. With Homestead Realty doing the, the marketing of those properties, or no, this is not something we want to bother. Or in some instances, we think this property has value of the town, and we like the town to keep this. So the one property that, that Darren is talking about that is not marketable is just a mobile home.
Yes.
Yeah, and so. The, the land, there's no back taxes on the land that is beneath that, it's only on the home itself. And so what Darren and I have talked about is, we do think that we could seek bids on that, and then it would be up to the owner to work with the landowner to determine whether or not that, that mobile home stays there or is removed from the property.
That would be the new owner of.
Correct.
And are any of these occupied currently?
So as far as we, because this is the first step in the process, we've not reached out to anybody, but six of them have homestead exemptions. So I think you can, you can assume that at least those six properties, plus the mobile home, are occupied. Now, we do have two properties, one on High Street and one on Moral Street. We've had, there's a provision in the policy to allow the prior owner to repurchase the property for all of the taxes, interest, and cost that are due. And we've had the owners and representatives of the owners of those two properties on High Street and on Moral Street to step forward to say, we're prepared to, to pay the town so that the owners can stay in these homes. And so, as I said, those folks are here, they have representatives with them here, and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have in that regard. But as, as Darren said, it strikes me as a, as a pretty good option because we're going to get all the money that we were due sooner rather than later. And we're allowed, and we're able to keep some folks in their homes. So, so assuming that you folks want to dispose of all the rest of those properties, we would send notices to them to, you know, start that process and give them that same option.
So are all of these properties in this that we have here, are these if we have actually foreclosed on?
These are, these now belong to the town of Winter. Legally.
No, we also have listed that there was one potential previous owner that.
There was one, but there's been another that has come forward, so, and those folks are here tonight.
Okay.
And then just to clarify, this is the first step in the other new closures that will allow them the same opportunity to pay back taxes.
Yeah, yeah, well, I feel like i- if we do allow folks to do that, and, and what we do is we include the policy in the notice that we send out. And so that they know there is an opportunity for them to repurchase it, but.
What kind of time?
But within limits. Well, the policy calls for up to, up to four payments to get that done. The folks who are here tonight have indicated they're ready to make one lump sum payment to, to pay off the debt and, and allow the, the owner to repurchase the property.
We have, can raise?
Davis, I want you to come over here to the.
My chicken's daughter, the convoy. I think, Mr. Wilson, we would like more payments if there.
Yeah.
Be acceptable to that. So I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
I feel pretty strongly that you probably can get two or three, maybe four or more, that they can do the same thing with your certain applying a letter, which, yeah. I think it's in everyone's best interest to do that.
Darren, have you had conversations with anybody?
No, I'm not allowed to have conversations to be honest.
What, what kind of assurance that we're gonna, or what, what do we, at what point does the property get turned back over to the? The property owners? After we get the four payments, or is it once the process has started?
No, after we get the four payments.
Okay. So, so are people not in the residences right now, and they've not been evicted?
We have not evicted anyone, they, they are in the residences right now.
In my opinion, if they're willing to, to pay the taxes, I, I just assume turn the property back over this. There's no way that.
Associated with the transfer.
Right, anything like that, that's fine. I mean, I, I, we're not in the real estate business, so.
With this new, with the, with the new legislation, that's exactly what we're gonna get if we sell it.
Right, but again, you know, this, this council's always been very willing to work with property owners. And I just want to say that, you know, the amount of tap the properties that are being foreclosed on ought to be an eye opener for everybody. That these taxes in this town are pretty damn high. So, you know, it's, it's about time that we start taking a look at this because there's gonna be more of this, no doubt. So that's where I stand.
Can I speak on behalf of the first, the first person? Can I speak on behalf of?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening, my name is Scott Boyd, and I'm here with my brother John, as is his son, and one of his best friends. And we're the first people on the dock, and we've had this house, John's house, it's been a family for over a hundred years. And John has always been an incredible painter, has had many contracts, people in here probably used them before. He's been on kind of hard times because he has a defibrillator and a pacemaker now, and can't do what he did before. But the family's gonna help him, and we'd like to do that as quickly as possible if we could get your boat. And we'll pay enough for payments if that's okay with the council. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm, I'm in favor of this, I, whilst the families are willing to work with the town, maybe keep up, keep their homes.
Oh, at school.
There's not an advantage to that, to the town. I mean, I know it's actually getting paid back the back taxes, so the money goes back to you, but it's your guy's situation, or anybody's situation. If it's your home, it's your home, and you'd like to keep it. So I'm all in favor. People are willing to come to the town and work with us, I think we all just say, that's how it should be. I mean, I think that's the way the state bars, I mean, we give them the opportunity to come and pay, why don't you give a notice, but.
Yeah, so the, again, the attorney has, you may recall, we amended the, the tax support policy. Just very recently, our, our attorney blessed everything that's in the policy, and this is a provision within the policy.
I, I just think it's, it's the one. These are some laws, people that's, when you're in it, they're not, they want to be part of it. Rather collect taxes when you're trying to sell a real estate. And Dan doesn't do that. Yeah, I mean, these people, these people, they live in the community, they're buying groceries here, getting their gas here, going to, you know, hair salon, whatever the case may be. So it's not, not only anyone's best interest to.
Correct.
We're moving the property. But there are various situations where people may have abandoned the property, or health-wise are no longer able to sustain the property or any of their relatives. So everything, everyone who's gonna be in case, high case situation.
I think it's a separate motion.
Any other questions?
I have this one. We do.
Since I agree with Linda's comment about taxes, possibly, too, I have so many foreclosures, I have a question for Anthony. Are all these foreclosures recent, or are they, are us being unaware what to do there? They're not having been brought up prior to your entry into our town.
Yeah, so these foreclosures all relate to unpaid taxes dating back to two thousand and twenty one. So, so on all ten of these properties, there have not been taxes collected over the last three years.
So the number, would it be correct to interpret that as a number of foreclosures? There are certain, due to a certain laxity in, in looking at this and failing to send out tax notices.
Well, no, I, I think.
There's a whole process involved.
Yeah, and I think, Andy. Since I've come on board, we've discovered a lot of properties where the foreclosure process started, but was never completed. And so now we're in the process of trying to address each one of those properties altogether. I think there's something like fifteen of them.
Well, that's the question that I was asking, did your procedures which started and never completed, and now you're working to complete them, which kind of puts up falsely the number of foreclosures in any given period.
Yes, yes and no. So, so yes, that's true, but also, just to make clear, so all these ten are new foreclosures. So it's not something that was starting in the past and never completed. We started in the past, and this year we completed it after the three-year period for which taxes were not paid.
Sorry, I agree with Linda that this is not a good sign, okay, about what our taxes are.
I mean, twenty-five, twenty-five properties, I've, I've never seen that on the council. Ten in two years? These are, these are not properties that are, you know, these are some nice properties. And I think, again, this council really has to take a look at this for the damn taxes in this town. I mean, this is, these are substantial numbers on this stuff. And you're gonna be seeing more because the economy, if you read and you're doing your, your due diligence, there are people that are being laid off. There, you're seeing more of that, and I, you're seeing it, what?
I'm saying the taxes is going up.
And the taxes are going up, and I'm just, I, I, I think that this is absurd. Twenty-five properties potentially we have, I, I just.
Well, and fifteen additional that had been.
Yeah.
So, to be clear, those fifteen other properties, those date back years and years and years and years ago. It was a matter of the town years ago dropping the ball and never seeing that process.
It's been seventy years. It doesn't matter. Ten in two years, a lot. It's a lot. These are nicer properties. Is this one false hope of a motion?
So, so, so I think it would be, I think it would be, oh, we have a, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Steve, please. This is seventeen Moral Street.
I'm here with my friend Carolyn Roslin. It's very interesting to ask that. She does have about three thousand dollars of seeds that don't seem to fit against the accounting that we receive. She probably want opportunity to see what happened with the things.
Six, six, nine, High Street, seventeen.
And as well. The, her settlement is kind of extraordinary, given the house in question. The land is like filled times.
Oh, that's sweet.
Whatever. But. In eight months, it's stopped, wants to take her out, if she's been given credit for the payments that she actually has received from the event before. And we'll pay that amount due in full. If that doesn't happen enough. By any of the events, I'll look at her file because she actually definitely is probably receiving in notices. But that's another matter that we'll have to address, once you. We may have ownership in your action.
This is seventeen moral.
And did you?
I actually have question points.
And it's not probably, the reason that your friend asked, that was current, they're current this last couple of years?
Yeah.
How about the, and, and we handled that as a staff early.
They, they started on, on one with a thousand dollar payment. On the, and. Oh, let me see. Another five hundred from last July. Six, five hundred from last August. And another six hundred more recently, five hundred more recently.
Yeah.
So they're all within the timeframe captured by the taxer's question, including without limit to the immaturity taxing, which for the most part, appears they have very little credit against the balance that we want to be.
Any other question?
Yeah, just direction, just saying that we acknowledge that. If we can figure out.
So, so, yeah, so again, what we would do is, we'd work with these folks to determine how much is owed, and then we would require that in no less than four payments.
And if there was any discrepancy.
Or excuse me, no more than four payments.
Okay, and any discrepancy, it was all the same.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, but, but be clear, so. We're essentially talking about tax year twenty twenty one. If you've not paid your twenty twenty one taxes in full, then your property is foreclosed.
Okay, so this isn't a matter of.
I, I don't, I, I'm not, you know, I don't know about that, but if.
Find out in.
Yes. Yes, we, yes, we will, but, but again, if you're making a payment here and a payment there, and you still haven't met whatever your twenty twenty one tax bill is, then, then your property is in, in risk of being foreclosed.
Can you have a question?
I'd like to make a motion that with respect to the two properties, all but with respect to the two properties, sixty-nine High Street and seventeen Moral Street, that those two owners of those properties be allowed to pay the taxes and any fees or anything going forward so that we can turn the property back over them, correct? Return the property?
Yes.
Yes. And then all the other properties, I vote that we foreclose in due process.
Second.
There is a motion in the second, all in favor? All are in favor? Moving on to item thirty-six, discussion and consideration of the community resilience partnership office.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So, so Jameson, if you'd like, give me a call tomorrow, we'll work it out.
I can, well.
Same for you, Steve.
So, again, item thirty-six for the community resilience. We are opening this up for discussion. And to Councilor Wayman, I'll turn it over to you, Bernie.
So I just have a a, so questions, I think we kind of left this undecided what we were gonna do, with on whether we're gonna go for it or not. I just have a big concern with the, the going with this community resilience partnership with the town of Bonnet, given the, and I've been watching it for a month and a half, two months, the mismanagement of the dam down there that there's been quite a deal. In January, I went down and took some photographs, there was three feet of brush in the mouth of the dam. Now, we have the Hoover Dam down there, and the slowest way is packed full of debris, it's not gonna function properly. That same three feet of brush was in the dam last week, last Sunday, when we went down and I went down during the storm, during the heavy rain, there was a three feet of brush in the dam then, there was also that dock wedged in the dam sideways. And that dock was still there on, I believe it was Tuesday afternoon. And, you know, I, I just, my concern is this, if, if we have go through and deal with this, you know, the community resilience partnership, if we have to, we put some money for the engineering cost and all that stuff, we end up with a new dam. If a new dam is managed on the same maintenance schedule, practices, I mean, a new dam is gonna fill with brush just like this one, like dams, collective debris. And if it's, if we're gonna be in the same boat, even with the, the. Uh, and if it's, if we're gonna be in the same boat, even with the the, uh, new components, new structure. Uh, and, you know, given, I don't think this one at this point is given a fair shake when there's, when the, when the entryway to the dam is blocked. With three feet of brush, it's kind of hard to have the lake level go down if it's damned up. And I just, I don't see, I think it's, um. To a degree negligence on some part, and it's, I think that needs to be taken care of, that piece of it needs to be taken care of before. I'm comfortable for all the money I have.
Uh, just commenting to clarity for the record, so, and Anthony sent out the email. That this grant, if we do go into, um, partnership with Monmouth. That the entire grant would have to be utilized on a group. Uh, proposal, it could be multiple, but it'd have to be with the town of Monmouth. And so therefore, it could, you'd have to be all, uh, with the dam, all under twenty-five thousand would have to go towards him. Or some other cooperative, uh, arrangement with the town of Monmouth. If we go in this on our own, then we are looking at fifty thousand dollars, uh, individual, uh, projects.
Speaking, Jordan, I went down there as well after the heavy rain, this was every rain. Again, I bring this way, I did, I was down the verse, saw the dock wedged up in there, saw the much debris, thinking. As of that, I thought, and he said, it's not, not getting in, it's right maintenance, or people look at it and they hate me, so it's like. I kind of can see the values of that, uh, where I really lead on, and I was, and I was. You know, I'm saying anybody misled us, I was really, I wanna help, I wanna look at this. But when we found out we were partnering up and that could really only be like one thing or whatever, jointly. One thing, uh, with this resilience program. I kind of phased out, thinking, well, we'll just provide work on our own, get fifty thousand dollars, do some other things that we need to have done in this community as well. Um, so that's kind of where I was at with it, uh, in my thoughts. So I just wanted to bring it down there. I I've been watching it myself, like going down there a couple of times, but after the heavy rain, we got a chance. And there was no way for that water to drain, there's no way, so.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, Wendy, but how old is that name Wendy? You know? So it's safe for you. I, seventy percent of the property owners, I think, live in Windsor, irrespective of where the dam is. And I really think it's time to give that again thorough inspection. I would never support spending the kind of money that we spend for electronic gates and all that stuff on Radecook, I never would do that. But we do need a thorough inspection to make sure there's no underflow. And probably a gate system that's serviceable. So that probably means we need an engineering inspection.
Yeah. Um, and I agree with that assessment, I think that this is something that the town of Monmouth is gonna move for. With regardless of what we hear, and the the expectation will still be that we contribute. Some, uh, judiciary, um, you know, responsibility, given that a a good significant portion. Of that, uh, waterfront in Windsor, so this being an opportunity to do it at no cost, um, I do think. Um, would be worthwhile.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree.
No, I'm gonna do it, I I do, I do think that I I've seen a huge change, and since they have different public works. Uh, directors and, and I'm not, I'm not sure when it was, it was nice. But, you know, there, I don't know how, you know, responsive, probably had not had a contact at some point there, when they didn't have a director. Um, to get down there necessarily, but.
Yeah, I was in contact with the department of the department.
Okay, so they've definitely had some changes, um, and then maybe, maybe their past practices were not safe, I don't know. But, um, I do know there have been other times where there was a lot of water, and certainly I think some of this issue has been the lack of consistent. Um, monitoring or, you know, paying attention to the debris and whatnot, because there's a considerable amount of debris on the thing. For the last year, that I've seen multiple times treated.
Wendy's here, maybe somebody can explain to me a little bit. Um, what is an engineering analysis or somebody, what is the cost, what is that cost? Because where I've seen it and I've gotten some letters, people wanna spend the money to do the co- engineering analysis there, on the dam business. So for me, I understand that, but then the rest of the money I want put towards the dam, which I, I think it's. I I'm willing to put something towards it, and again, I was willing to figure split the money up, and it's all game, and like, let's put. Let's put X towards it, and then the rest of it we put in this other community or other things, so that one lump sum. But what is the, have you guys run the numbers, have you got a, a quote, whatever it takes, I'm giving them a look at that.
I don't have those numbers because that wasn't assigned to me to get those numbers, and the Monmouth Town Manager expects them very soon. But I checked today and they weren't in, um, and I had hoped that. That. Whatever money wasn't used for an engineering study could then be set aside towards implementation. You kind of start a lot of money towards the actual, you know, construction remediation, um. The person at K V C who came here a few meetings ago and explained this community resilience partnership grant. Uh, told me that, uh, that's not how it would work, so it would be another grant application. To get money to actually do the work on the dam, and this first round, the money were just before. All the preliminary work that needs to be done, so. I want to go two different directions here, so I don't get what you said, Jim, about, um, you know, other projects too. But first, to talk about the, um, work that gets done, the preliminary work before actually. Contractor goes down to the dam and does something physical, um. There's several steps that one would go through, uh, one would be a complete underwater inspection. Of the dam, the entire dam, upstream and downstream, so that it could be determined what kind of shape the dam is in. You know, we're start cutting into part of the dam to put in a new gate if. Another section of the dam is not stable and is scouring, so the first thing is that condition assessment. And then. If that shows some efficiencies, then the money would be used for. A design what needed to be done so the contractor could know what to do to go in and fix that. The other part of it is to look at the options for increasing the water outflow, which is what we started with, the idea was to. Uh, reduce flooding by getting water out faster, so whether that's putting in a gate or two gates or whatever it might be. Look at different options and see what ones would, and this is done by both engineering and doing sound hydrologic. Or how much water comes in during storms, how much do you need to get out to make a difference to the lake level? And which of these engineering options would get you close to the objective? But still be provided with, you know, cost benefit, uh, so that's all part of this engineering evaluation. And then the towns would choose the option that was from the ones that were presented by the engineer. And then the engineer would do final design work, actually come up with engineer drawings. So that you could then put it out to bid, and the contractor could come in and follow those engineered designs and do the job. So those are the kind of items that would be in this preliminary study, and, um. If the towns don't go in together, all the that preliminary work may not be able to get done. If they do, they think that it would be, but I don't have those cost figures, I looked at what it was from Miranda Cook. It was sixty thousand dollars for all that, and that was back in two thousand seventeen, so. Uh, thinking a couple of steps from Miranda Cook could be cut back on, but then again, the hydrologic study from Miranda Cook. We got a raw bottom price on that because the person doing it was going for president, and she wanted to give that to the town, so that might balance out. And then you can't know what places, how they changed in two thousand seventeen. So I don't think it can all get done, or if Monmouth goes in by, just by itself, but they would do as much as they could. So. Would it all cost a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to use all that money? I hope not, um. It's a cost estimate that should be there, and for the grant application has to go in, so the options would be apply for all the one twenty-five. If that money that wasn't spent, or maybe there'll be a cost estimate in time that's less than that. Um, then it would be another round, you know, another year. To apply the money, more than some grant money of this source, actually do the job.
So, James, based with all that, this done, you're saying this all goes, we do it, they do the analysis, they do all this work. Put in whatever they suggest, and it costs X. Who's to say next year, year after, maintenance, who's going to maintain this thing down the road after the money's been spent? How how do we put something in place to make sure this thing is maintained, so we're not gonna react again?
So, I'm not sure that I'm the person that can answer that, I certainly understand the question.
You're hoping to expect a dam, you check the water levels, and you're there, you can make recommendations to certain town managers, the public works, or whoever's charged. To kind of clean that out, or do certain maintenance to make sure it doesn't get to where it is today.
Right, I do make recommendations, true, I was talking with respect to if. When I said I wasn't sure that I was supposed to be able to answer that, I was talking about if you, if Winthrop and Monmouth decide to go in together. Spend money to actually fix the dam, that would be between the two towns to work out some maintenance agreement. But as far as the Coffee Water District being involved in the maintenance and making recommendations. Um. When the dock appeared in the dam opening, a photograph of that was sent to the town of Monmouth. Public Works, there were notified of that, when the bait box came up against the dam. Another photo was sent to the town of Monmouth, and there were notified of it, so that is part of what we do, is when we're there, see something that's a problem. Uh, we notify the town of Monmouth of that. So the dock. We get removed fairly soon, I thought, given the power, how the water was. Um, but I know that it was not done by the town Monmouth Works.
That difficult to get to, and I almost, I waited a little bit, walked, put them on the rope, connected the name, probably about ten minutes, so.
Well, it was down by a truck, chained on, and that's goodness. And, uh, the owner of the bait box was notified to come, yeah, it is. That finally came out, when I say finally, though, this is also, in my opinion, from what I've seen throughout the years. The block control, those two items weren't there for very long, and were very, that's very routine, when we have a lot of water to get that. Kind of debris washing up, the trees have been there a long time.
Thank you, Wendy, um, so I'm just gonna interject for just a moment, uh, this is not really a discussion about the maintenance, but more so just a discussion about the community resilience partnership. And just looking back through our minutes, uh, specifically the January twenty-second meeting, we did vote unanimously to, uh, move forward. Uh, with this, to invest in climate-ready infrastructure, I don't think we specified whether we were going to explore the option, I believe. Uh, with surrounding towns, and I believe we reached out to Monmouth, and, uh, they, that went to the town. Uh, but I don't think we made a specific decision as far as whether we are doing it individually or partnership, um. I have received, uh, multiple letters in support of the Anavestic Dam. And also using those surplus funds to complete any, uh, additional information or just earmarking it for the dam. Uh, personally, I do feel that if we went in individually, that's a fifty thousand dollars, um, for the compute, community, uh, resilient partnership. And I feel that I'm I'm grateful for our town, uh, town manager and our staff and support for seeking out this grant. And for applying for it, uh, but fifty thousand for our town, fifty thousand for Monmouth, if they choose to seek the grant as well. And then pursue the Anavestic Dam, uh, like you said, it shouldn't amount to much more than Miranda Cook was at sixty thousand in twenty seventeen. However, understanding the hydrologic survey was done by somebody locally, um, again. Together, that adds up to about a hundred thousand for each individual town, if there's leftover money, then with a considerance allocated for other. Um, assets or infrastructure culverts, uh, if that's something that we per- choose to pursue. I think right now that's what we're looking at for options, uh, and I'd like to hear more from the council as far as what else they would like to see.
But if I something, and you have to be correct me if you, um, don't share this understanding, but Shannon. Uh, if you go in with Monmouth. On a grant application for an amount up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You can't use the money for a different project. Just for winter, the two ten, if it's a joint grant, then whatever you do with the money has to be. A joint two-town project, so. Uh, you have the option of, uh, joining in with Monmouth on this grant. Or in the next eleven days, you could write a grant, you could not join with Monmouth, Monmouth applies for fifty thousand. And in the next eleven days, you write a grant application for some other project that you wanna do. But the deadline for this round is March twenty-ninth, the next round of money is available fall and winter. So it seems to me that those are the two choices, and correct me if there's something. Mistaken.
So, so I, uh, that's correct, but I want, uh, correct one other thing, is that, um. Wendy mentioned about this being a potential first phase, then we would return to the community resilience program for more money moving forward. That may not be an option for us, because this round of funding is for towns that are enrolled and have never received. Community resilience program partnership funding before, so. Moving forward, the state may do something different, but there's no guarantee that we would be eligible for any additional. Uh, community resilience, uh, funds moving forward, I I'd like to frame it, I think you have, in my mind, you have one or two choices. You can either do this project with Monmouth, or the other sort of more obvious project that we have is. We could you, we could apply for fifty thousand dollars and use that to offset the town's cost. Uh, after the efficiency main rebates to, um. Uh, offset cost of converting our facilities to heat pumps and LED lighting. I I think, in my mind, those are your two, two options that you're dealing with, and it's a, it's a matter of what you find the most valuable.
And I I agree with you that who's gonna maintain this? And I'd rather see the money go, now that I just heard that, I'd rather see the money go to efficiency projects like the heat pumps. Like, you know, that sort of thing, as opposed to the dam, I I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but. If we don't know if we're gonna be able to get additional monies, then we'll have a study that's just sitting there. As opposed to being able to utilize some money for some other projects that we know we're gonna have to come up with money for.
So I have two comments without wanting to be, you know, argumentative about it, I'm trying to just get the. Information out of the way that I've heard it, um. That. Previous round of CRP grants, um. You know, some towns were able to apply, all towns were able to apply, and this round is the same thing you said, just for towns would have never applied before. But the workshop that I went to indicated that then the next round wouldn't be limited to towns that had never applied before. It would be for everyone, so what that would mean is that you would have more competitors. I don't think it means that you wouldn't have an opportunity to apply, it means there would be more competition next time.
Yeah, I I just don't want anyone thinking that, oh, yeah, we'll get this grant, and then when we're done with this, we'll just go get another grant, because that that may not be. An opportunity for us, I just, I I just want to set a low bar of expectations moving on to that.
I know, so try to, you know.
Can I just do a follow? So, given the fact that, o- okay, we, if we don't choose to apply for that specific project, can we always apply next time? If what you're saying is, we can go back at the apple twice, can we apply? Next time, if what you're saying is we can go back at the apple twice, can we apply next time? For potentially this type of a grant, where we'd already be in the system, we wouldn't be a new. You know, we wouldn't be a comp, uh, a, a town that would just be applying for the first time.
That is what the presentation by.
Right, but I'm saying is that's what, so, yeah, so.
Would both be able to apply individually or together.
But if we chose, but if we chose to apply for something else, not the dam this time. Can we always go back and apply later on? We can always do another grant, yeah.
Yeah.
There's nothing to stop us from.
As far as I know.
Okay, so I think the most.
I wanted to mention something about the.
Efficiency projects here.
Maintenance.
That's just my.
Uh, to, to address the, the maintenance, and you're having to walk the fine line because I don't want to. I'm not going to say that the town of Monmouth has done everything they can, because I don't know the inner workings there. Um, but they are cooperative, uh, they own the log and dam too. And whenever I notify them that there's something amiss there, they go right down and take care of it, and that's partly because. The physical setup there is easier to do that, so I think that if a modification of the Anabesikuk Dam should include. A way to make it easier for the town of Monmouth to maintain the dam, and I can understand. You know, why you want some assurance that it's going to be maintained, this is something that was being looked at. Um, down in Gardner at the new mill stand, which is at the end of the chain, um, and in the past. The dam owners depend on the dam operator to. Remove debris when they could, but some of it was too hard to get to, they had to wait months for the dam owner to decide to. Hire somebody to come in with a crane and take things out, um. And in this last year where there's been a lot of flooding and there's been a lot more debris against that burdened dam. Uh, there's been, there have been meetings, there have been three hours of that dam, uh, meetings, uh, um. We can have the best first response at this, Gardner Fire Department, Litchfield Public Works, et cetera. The towns talk together, they're talking together about how do we have a good first response to debris against the dam. When a situation where it really matters to, to get it out, so, you know, I think that there's something that can be worked out. About a concern, I would say that the debris that's against this, when the water's high, as it was after that. March can rainstorm. That means a lot of water is going out o- over the spillway, so at that point, this theoretically with our calculations. Based on US Geological Survey, um, formulas, seventy-seven percent of the water is leaving the lake over the spillway. So we've got twenty-three percent going out through that small orifice. Something was partially blocking it, but not completely, so you've got. You know, maybe ten percent or less blockage of the water there, so it might look worse than it really is. It can see water flowing under it, flowing out of different perspective.
Well, I guess, I guess I look at it this way, if the, if the dam was maintained properly. And, uh, the debris had been out of there since the fall. Uh, and we were able to maintain, you know, the, the lake level was down, it would give up, the, the lake would. Be able to absorb some of that rainwater and it wouldn't be such a, uh, significant issue.
So I'm all for that, um, immediate maintenance and removal of debris. And that's something that we've had to work on in Winter at the mill dam, uh, things were. Brought up there quite a bit and the Winter Public Works, um, after some time figured out a way to address that. And they're able to do that much more frequently than they used to. So I think the same kind of thing can happen with Monmouth Public Works, uh, and should, um.
So question, so potentially, we could be going in this as a joint venture. As a joint venture with the town of Monmouth, the study engineering must come back seventy-five thousand dollars. So then we're down, I think that's it, we cannot, can't, so that makes you, you're losing the money going into a study. Uh, versus being able to move, expand quite an entire fifty thousand, utilize fifty thousand dollars, which we know we realize. I would have pretty significant concerns if we couldn't utilize all one hundred and twenty-five thousand, that would be a big game changer.
Yeah, uh, under that, under those conditions, Erin, uh, yeah, if we wanted to use a whole hundred and twenty-five, we'd have to find another joint project. With, uh, with Monmouth in order to, to do that.
But are we, your understanding was that during K D cog that it would have to be just that one project?
No, it, it, it could, it could be, it could be multiple projects with the same partner.
Would we have time to like revise? Because we won't have the ability to go back, they don't have.
No, we, no, we have to include that in the grant.
Real estate.
Yeah, yeah, and again.
Which is too bad.
And again, the clock is ticking, so we gotta get the grant application in by next Friday, and I'm, I'm meeting with Bronya tomorrow, so. Really like to get this nailed down.
Yeah.
Okay, it, it sounds to me like we might wanna spend fifty thousand dollars on heat pumps tomorrow. And ignore dam maintenance until next year, the year after, and the year after, which may well be too late. And like Anton said, no guarantees we're gonna get a grant next year or the year after. I highly recommend, assuming this grant will cover engineering studies and preparations for an RFP. All right, B, we, uh, use that, go in the bomb front dam, we use that money. Just study that dam and, and come up with an engineering study, which would include, um, a way for. Uh, to get machinery out there far enough, remove the gate in close enough to, um. Make it easier to keep that dam clear. I, I think heat pumps today are not as important as getting that dam fixed in the future.
Yeah, the only way I would agree with that is if we could find some way to make sure that we get full utilization of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Whether or not doing, you know, we would have to tag on Dan from the structure or like something. I would be very, uh, it would not be wise to get, if we only end up with a sixty-five or seventy-five thousand dollars study. Because then we're only getting a forty thousand, less than thirty-five.
I don't think, by the time you get a study, that's gonna mean divers, might mean some die testing. Okay, uh, it's gonna mean an engineering drawings, uh, moving the gate about away from machinery access to gate. Uh, they can, we don't know how bad the dam is, so we don't know how deep, deeply the engineering studies are gonna have to go. Um, I, I don't think we're gonna have a lot of extra money that we're gonna throw away on this one, I really, really don't.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for Carol M. Branning, Carol and John Branning on Zoom.
Hi, um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Carol Branning, I'm the president of the Anabesikuk Lake Improvement Association. Um, I think, um, the council may be somewhat uninformed about how the dam works and how hard it is to maintain. It's an old dam, it's very difficult to remove the boards, and with the weather that we've had, they've been unable to remove the boards. I think Wendy just tried to explain this multiple times. I'm very frustrated with the fact that this is taking so long to come to the conclusion that something needs to be done. It's not just about debris in front of the spillway, it's not just about, um, Winthrop Council, this dam is the. Seventy percent of the people on that lake pay taxes to Winthrop, and I, thank you, Andy, I heard you say that and I was very pleased to hear it. I think it's really important for you to understand, this is also not just about property owners. However, property values are gonna go down if our properties are damaged by high floodwater, and that has happened to many, many people on the lake this year. And I, what I'd like to see is for you to recognize that it's climate change and high water levels that have made it almost impossible. For this lake to be well-managed and the dam is old, so it's not just about a lack of maintenance. This dam needs to be worked on, it needs to be studied, it needs to be repaired, and I'd really like to see the people that represent me. Do the right thing with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anything else from the council?
Well, I'm actually at the last meeting, and I asked you, maybe Bill, to discuss. The levels of Miranda Cook and the levels of Torsey, have the ability to take more water currently today. You showed us that on a chart, but those dams could be raised to slow the water that's going down. Into each rising water, which will slow the water down going into Anabesikuk currently today.
So Miranda Cook date is not totally wide open, and, uh, today. The lake is about, um. Seven and a half inches above Polpon, um, Miranda Cook. Anabesikuk is one foot above Polpon today, so Miranda Cook. There is some conservative management at Miranda Cook with respect to Anabesikuk. But it's not as much as what you're suggesting, Jen.
We even torso, I mean, it's that's a, a torso.
Yes.
So that dam could be closed up as well, enough to slow down the water that's coming into Miranda Cook, sending, we can slow it up out of Miranda Cook going into Anabesikuk. It'll reduce, hopefully the water, we call it, levels should go down over time, and it's not, it doesn't happen overnight, but it's gonna take some time, but. If you guys start regulating those dams, let those waterways take on a little bit more water to reduce the water that's happening downstream.
So, okay, so I know what people are talking about in general or right now, right now, uh, the Torsey Pond Dam has been closed. It was closed down to, um, being open four inches, uh, before the weekend, and as of today, it's only open two inches. So that is happening pretty fast.
Andy, go.
Yeah, I'm, I was just gonna kind of remind everyone that the Anabesikuk Dam is only one dam. In a long system of dams in the Cogsey Watership, always they had their importance for water flow management. And, uh, the failure of one dam or the inappropriate operation of one dam due to physical conditions affects everyone else. You know, we have to hold more word back in Miranda Cook, uh, Anabesikuk is, you know, is too high, whatever. They all have to work properly, we have to look at the future to see, you know, we don't, we don't need to be increasing the levels on other lakes. Because that's, that's, that isn't working, right? We need to fix the Anabesikuk Dam. Simple damage.
Um, Wendy, from your approximation, if we do the study, the engineering analysis. And we add in, and I don't know, maybe this isn't allowed in on the application, but, uh, you know, work to begin or whatever. In this application, because we have to submit this, so, you know, if we just do the engineering analysis, uh, we may very well may end up. Causing more, you know, like burden than we otherwise would. Um, so I would wanna know that if you, in your estimation, that we could get the full value of. The hundred and twenty-five thousand between the study and add-on work.
Okay, I think I understand your, uh, question, Erin, and if it appears that I don't, please interrupt me, let me know. So, yeah, I had had the idea that, uh, the best thing would be to go for one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Whatever the preliminary work cost, spend that, and then we'll just make up. Uh, numbers for ease of math, say there's twenty-five thousand dollars left, everything else cost a thousand. Then that could go in a fund, you know, towards implementation. I was told today that that's not the case, we'll explore that further, but there's two things. We have to put, I was told, we have to put in the application what you're going to spend the money on. And if you're not going to actually do anything, say there was twenty-five thousand dollars left. If you're not actually gonna do anything with that, except put it in a fund, that that wasn't allowable. I asked that question twice, because sometimes you don't always get known twice, but that's what I was told, that that's not okay. Um, second thing that I was reminded of is that, once the grant money is awarded. The work has to be completed within a year, so it's not realist, unless it could be put in pot. It's not realistic that all the preliminary work and construction work. We get started within a year, so that's another drawback.
But we could, can I just follow Wendy where we, we get the, the studies and, um, inspection. And then we're talking engineering grant, you know, seventy thousand, say it's a seventy-five thousand dollar study.
We split that in half even, you know, with Monmouth, then rather than going and taking the fifty thousand dollars. And we're leaving tax burden somewhere else in town, we would actually be better off taking thirty-five thousand or forty thousand. And going in a taxpayer to do the study versus relinquishing. So we, we, we have to be judicious in thinking that way, I don't wanna be, you know, and, and the problem is, is we don't have. The estimate or an idea, I haven't heard an idea of the estimate, but if you go in and it comes back at eighty thousand. Then it's forty thousand, we're short ten thousand dollars, what we could be applying somewhere else to alleviate taxpayers. Program to implement the, the heat pumps, the game center, so, you know, I'm, so I don't want the lake association to think that we're completely just. You know, ignoring the idea that the dam needs to be dealt with, it does need to be dealt with, we have to be judicious in how we appropriate funds. That makes the less impact onto the taxpayers, so regardless, the dam study in, engineering needs to happen. I acknowledge that, I think everyone on this council has acknowledged that, we just have to decide how we're gonna go about. Best utilization of funds.
Yes, yeah, I mean, just, um, generally, so that, that, uh, one of the things that. Whatever money you can get without any match, this is a grant that's no match, whatever, an opportunity to get money. That you don't have to match, put towards a known problem, it's a good thing.
And Monmouth can still apply, they have, yes, so they can still apply for fifty thousand currently, I would be no problem, they put in a little bit more towards it. If we needed to, to get them to that.
I mean, I mean, Erin explained exactly what I was thinking, my, my mindset, and, and that's really, yeah, you put it better than I ever did. But just the fact that we could spend money towards things that we're gonna spend money on already, and I'd rather take funds of our own money and put it towards that. And we'll, it'll be a better cost savings in the long run, because we take that fifty thousand dollar grant, we apply alone. We put it towards like the heat pumps, there is that now, we don't have to pay more out of our taxpayer money, like we could put four, thirty, thirty-five thousand. Towards being forty thousand, as you said, still would save ten thousand dollars, and it's a better cost savings overall.
And we know we're gonna get full benefit of it.
Correct.
Right.
So.
We're not getting.
Yeah, I totally.
The underlying, underlying premise of that is that you can, um. Come up with your project and put together a grant application for it. To be, yeah.
We can.
Yeah, yes. I totally agree with what, what, what you said, I, I like that a lot better, we can take thirty-five dollars surplus if we have to.
Do you want to make a motion?
I was saying that during the Miranda project, we were constantly surprised, you know, we being in town of Winthrop. I was working closely with the town manager and we were constantly surprised with how much things cost. I think that will happen this time too, so I don't suggest that. They're only gonna be eighty thousand, I'm not making that suggestion at all, so thanks for asking the questions and. Um, considering this, a great opportunity to do something.
Thanks very much, Wendy, we appreciate all your input.
All right, that's about it, okay, now, I'm, sorry, can I, to go ahead and motion, kind of premise. I do encourage the town of Monmouth to apply for fifty thousand dollars in addition, because that will make it, you know, I'm saying that we have forty thousand, nine, right? So that's significant, um, so the motion being that I would. Um, move to make motion to direct Anthony to move, make an application for the fifty thousand dollar. Individual, uh, community action grants, community resilience partnership, uh, in regards to heat pumps and.
Heat pump and LED lighting rebates, or rebates.
So, program that we've been talking about.
Second.
Andy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I did, um, two things, one is I think that we are, and one surprise, we, we go well over. You know, the hundred grand for the dam, okay, um, and like I said. When the heat pumps stay, but off the problem, the dam is tomorrow, um, and also please keep in mind that, as time has gone on here. We've done more and more in a cooperative effort with Monmouth, other schools, okay, our roads. Okay, our roads, our police department, and this like send another little signal over there. We don't want to run on this one. So that's all I got to say. I'm not gonna support this.
So, uh, when I meet with Granya tomorrow morning, I'll also be in a meeting with the Monmet Town Manager. And I'll explain sort of what the rationale behind the council's decision will be, whichever way it goes.
So, so, Andy, we're not pushing you down the road. I think most of the getting the support of the council here. I just was just thinking about Brandon too. Even if we spent fifty thousand dollars, say it's a hundred thousand dollars, it's a wash because we're gonna send fifty thousand dollars on the heat pumps. We're getting that grant money. So that money's there. So it's really, it, it could be a win, it could be a wash. But I think everybody here is saying, we're not kicking you down the road. To be saying it's kicking down the road is just kind of stalling people. We're not saying we're gonna kick this down the road. We want to have this in stack. If we want to have to do a study, so we want to hope that. So in fairness to everybody here, I think we're just trying to be this responsible.
Well, we're not gonna apply a hundred of the grant money.
We, we, you know, I, I, we just got them saying that what we're gonna do is when they have the, um, the cost or the whatever, we can apply for the, we can actually pitch in money, pitch in money for the, the cost of the, of the inspection.
Right.
We've just got them saying we're gonna do that.
Right.
So we're not kicking the can down the road.
Right.
Or if we have to take it out, we have surplus money, we can take it out of surplus. It's thirty, forty thousand dollars.
It's gonna do it for the heat.
So we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna just let us know what the cost of the, of the inspection is gonna be. And then you can talk to Anthony about it.
Then put that in the motion.
We don't have to put it in a motion. We've just got direction or Anthony just has a direction that as soon as they know what the cost to us, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll encourage Momma to apply for grants.
Yeah.
If they get the fifty thousand dollars, then whatever the, the delta is on that, then that's something that the council's eager to consider.
Yes, very much so.
I'm just gonna say the last comment, um, is that I felt that it's hard to make any kind of decision without having any quote or estimate to move forward on. Um, so I would like to add that, add it to the agenda in the upcoming meeting. Uh, as Anthony was sitting there saying, or Andy was sitting there saying to add it into the motion. But if we can add it to the agenda, I'd like to.
There's, yeah, I, so.
There's not really a motion here because.
Right. Yeah, I don't know the cause.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so the best way to, to determine that is to actually issue an RFQ or request for qualifications. And so, you know, that in and of itself is a process. And then once you do that, then, then you have an opportunity to negotiate a cost. And so, uh, even that's a little bit of a process.
But I do want to thank everybody from the Lakes Association and from the County Sheriff's Department, the County Sheriff's Department. If you'd have been coming up and give us all the information regarding it and on the marketing of the dam. So, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, you're jaded.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Five? And all of?
All opposed.
All opposed. Five in one. Thank you. Moving ahead onto item thirty-eight, considering the need to follow fees. We have that broken down. Uh, one, eliminating office and nursery services for residents. I believe that is taking that away from all residents, but still charging a fee to be five dollars per contraction for non-residents.
I make a motion, uh, that would charge, uh, five dollars for non-residents and no, no additional charges for residents for nullizing documents.
All in favor? All in favor? All right, number two, uh, increasing the fee for disposal of tires at the transfer station.
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
I have comments on that. Questions?
All in favor?
Well, I'm not in favor.
Okay.
There's a question.
Okay.
No, I have comments.
Okay.
I'd like to know what, where, I, I see Doug's here. Uh, did we do any calculations to figure out where, where did we call for that five dollar for everything? That majority of all those.
Hey, so, so Doug, why don't you come up and use the microphone so that, so folks can hear you?
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, basically when we look at those numbers, that's the going rate that most transfer, uh, stations charge tires can be like five bucks.
Yeah, for all of them. My concern, I talked to Andy about it earlier, is that, you know, I can, I can name a handful of places that I can, I see stockpile the tires. But people that are just, don't want to pay the two dollars per tire.
Right, that's, that's their own. No, they don't want to pay to get rid of them. That's, that's.
I understand that, but my concern is the fact that, that, you know, raising, does it cost us more than that to get rid of them?
Yes.
What does it cost us to get rid of them?
Yeah, we look at those numbers, don't we?
Yeah, so, um, hundred and sixty dollars per ton plus a two hundred dollar pickup fee every time they come in and pick them up.
Yeah.
And, and to answer your question about five dollars for, there's nothing really magical about that, but we were already charging five dollars for tires that were over seventeen inches. And so we thought that would be easy, just the same, the same rate for every tire. It's easier to administer. And, uh, and quite frankly, you know, uh, I typically have a couple of, at least a couple of five dollar bills in my pocket. I rarely have a two dollar bill in my pocket. So it's just a nice round figure for someone to, to, to hand over a five dollar bill.
I've got eight tires I'm gonna get rid of right away.
No worries.
You don't have to worry. Okay.
But my concern is like what we, you know, we talked about early days, we both just either stockpile them, bury them, burn them, dumping them because the cost has more than doubled on the smaller tires.
Can I just say, we had that cost years ago when we just decided what, if we're gonna raise the, the cost on these. And I will say this to the council, if we see this as a problem, we can always revisit it. Um, but yes, there could be people dumping the tires.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I agree. To me, that's the bigger concern is that people just start throwing their tires in the ditches. And so, and Linda's spot on. There are very few decisions that can't be reversed if we just, if we determine we've made a bad decision. And this would, this would be an easy one to reverse.
Okay, so just like the show hands again, all those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to the next one, increasing the fee for disposal of e-waste at the transfer station. So it's a move.
Oh, computer.
So we're charging two dollars today, so it'd be five dollars per component. For, oh, now the tech guy has a problem with it.
No, no.
The title guy had a problem with that previous, now the tech.
Well, it's pretty cheap because I know that maybe it could cost. So I think it's, I think it's a little warmer to go up on some of that. They charge for every pickup and there's a cost associated with trying to dispose of this stuff. I mean.
Yeah.
Five bucks for it. There's some electronic waste that I think is pretty important. So it's not lying there on the land or anything. I know that's really the reason maybe to keep it down so it doesn't bind upon there.
Well, so this, these items do get recycled, correct, Doug?
They do, but I know most companies that recycle them, these things still charge, they're charged by the pound or something else to that. So I know, I know the cost, I think that's fair to me.
Carol, under the, what's that?
I'll make a motion. Uh, a motion to approve the, uh, the five dollars per item for disposal of e-waste.
Second.
All in favor? All are in favor? Next one, targeting commercial businesses for disposing of brush at the transfer station. So commercial users disposing of brush, establishing fees of forty dollars for a pulp truck, twenty-five for a dump trailer, and fifteen for a small dump truck, such as a one ton truck. Uh, for no charge for residential users' personal load, but a five dollar for each additional load the same day.
Yeah, and so this is strictly cost us. I mean, there's no revenue that's generated. And so we figured why, why are the taxpayers putting the bill for commercial businesses to come and, and dump their brush there? That, that those commercial businesses should be paying for that.
A couple of questions, yes, sort of. Is so the brush right now, we're talking about the backpack pile?
Yes.
Okay. And then how in the world would we monitor this or be able to determine, you know, someone came in or out or one's a business, one's not a business? And if it's a, one of our businesses is paying taxes?
Yeah, well, yes, they're paying taxes, but they're using a service that I guess, I would say, do we really want taxpayers subsidizing, uh, the commercial business dumping stuff at the, uh, at the transfer station without, for free? So Doug, will you please speak to the, to the monitoring of those, uh? You, you, you can, you can just stay at the podium. We got lots of questions for you. So we just. We speak to, to how you identify who's a commercial customer versus a residential customer.
Um, I guess for us, if we look at a commercial business, it would be somebody like Doyle, uh, Kinkback Tree Service. Uh, these are just a few examples I won't be considered for. Because they're making a profit on dump and rush. I mean, they're charging customers to get rid of that, that facility. So I think it's unfair that we charge them to get rid of that facility. But he says, instead of raising taxes, making the taxpayers pay.
So we take this brush and we ship it somewhere?
No, if someone comes and drives it and hauls it away, but we pay for that.
So there's no, like, we're not composting, we're not shipping it composting and handling it?
No, the only thing you call post facility file, um, and that's free for any residents who want to come in. In terms of brush, we have it shipped. And it could be twice a year, it could be three times a year. And that number slowly goes up in the years. We probably spend anywhere between three to five thousand dollars a year getting rid of it.
Yeah.
They don't use our chip.
No, no.
No, we, that's all higher.
Yeah. So, so and one of the other issues that we have is, you know, a commercial business is not a, uh, a Winthrop business comes in and they're dumping stuff there. We have no idea where that brush is from. It could be from, uh, Winthrop property. But it could also be from somewhere else because we're not charging for it. And for instance, the transfer station where I live does charge for them. So given the opportunity to dump it someplace where there's no charge, that's what they're gonna do. And, and again, it could be from, it could be from anywhere.
So, okay. Okay, I, I am kind of accused from this. If I hired Bob Smith to bring his seven yard dump truck in and haul a load of brush off my property because it's a town resident and send him to the dumpster pad. Okay, I'm paying him to haul that. And I'm a Winthrop resident and I'm not gonna be charged for the disposal fee for the brush. Okay. Okay. That's just not right. Now, if you want to make sure that the commercial haulers are bringing in the brush in Winthrop, then they need to stop on the way in and they need to get the investment program. They're all, simple, that, then if you want to, that's fine.
I also, I do think this would be, um, cause unintended consequences. I do think people start purring a lot more brush.
Oh, true.
It might, well, so I, I'm.
I don't think that I would be in favor of this measure based on the fact that I do think brush can be, you know, when it's put out to bill voids out back there or, or whatnot, but, um, or use the town center. But, um, I, I doubt that, if we tell some unintended consequences.
Um, I may like to make a motion that we approve a fee of forty dollars for a pulp truck, twenty-five for a dump trailer, and fifteen for a small dump truck. And no charge for residential users who dispose of brush.
And no charges are you changing?
No charge for the residential.
What about the additional?
What additional?
Five dollar charge for additional, so get rid of that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's no residential charge.
That way you don't have to hire anybody. You want to take that, that's fine. I'll say it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, there's been a motion in a second. All in favor? All in favor? Four in favor, two opposed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item thirty-six, discussing consideration of town council liaisons to county committees. Can you give your list of the?
I'd like to feed the Leas on to the Board of Assessment review.
I was all ready to write this down.
Hmm.
Yeah.
No, I'm fine with all.
What do you have?
So we decided how we're doing, we're just.
I think, I think so. Discussion consideration? Yes.
I can certainly be the recreation committee. I was on that for years. No problem. Who wants to be the, the planning board? Everybody.
Now, does this mean attending all the meetings or just following up with them or what's?
Following up with them and just being vocalized on. So when they have, uh, questions or comments, you also relay the information to the council. So if the council has questions, uh, then we serve as that liaison.
Yeah, and I think if there's a topic that they're discussing, it's of high interest, important impact, then, then you may want to attend the meeting for that discussion so that you could relate that to your fellow council members.
I don't think you're gonna be a little busy to begin our review now. And keep with everybody.
I just gotta make sure things are running smoothly.
I'll be sent there. Uh-oh. It's gotta be here soon anyway. Well, what else do we need?
Who else? The planning board.
So there's the.
Okay, Andy, you've been on.
Andy, the planning board, we saw Conservation Commission, Village Revitalization Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, Roy, Bruce, and myself.
Oh, oh, yeah. Y'all should load Bruce up on this, not him.
Yeah. Oh, my God.
The zoning board's not a bad gig. We're gonna volunteer. They're not the business. So forth. I can't do that one. I know too many of them.
I, I probably did zoning board.
Oh, for joy.
What's that?
I said, oh, for joy. No, I just, someone been on here twenty, thirty years like I was. I'm too close to that.
All right, so for the Village Revitalization Committee, I'll do that. We'll put James, uh, Bruce down for the Conservation Commission. All right, so, yeah, Board of Assessment Review, we have Linda, Cemetery Committee, James, Conservation Commission, Bruce, Planning Board, Andy, Recreation Committee, Aaron, Village Revitalization Committee, myself, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, Roy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
I think you're gonna volunteer to sign again.
All right, moving on to item thirty-nine, discussing consideration of cost base to chapters one and two of the town of Winter personnel policy. And we have, um, three. Need to move on to the last one, we can give some guidance. Wow, I mean.
Yeah, and just to speak to that one, so my thoughts on that last, uh, section seven of chapter two, uh, which addresses nepotism to some extent. I've had, I've had some additional thoughts about that. As far as, uh, I said, I wonder if we should prohibit relatives or people in romantic relationships from working in the same department. The relatives thing I have to rethought because I'm more aware now of relatives who work in the same department. They're both good employees and I don't know that we would want to lose, lose either of them. The romantic relationship thing, I think, could be problematic simply from a morality.
In, in one way.
Um, well, if it was a boss versus us.
Oh, no, no, bosses would never be allowed to pay subordinates. That, 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 that would be forbidden. But, uh, but if, you know, I think if people are a little too cozy in the workplace, I think that could lead to some uncomfortableness. And, and, and I think, you know, it, it, you could start some, uh, some water cooler chatter and so forth that would not necessarily be good for the organization. I, I could be wrong about that, but it just, as I was reading that, that, that was a thought that came to my mind.
Yeah.
I can think of quite a few, you know, like, enough couples, I mean, some of the towns probably instead of marrying. Um.
Aaron, are you saying who worked together in the same department?
Oh, yeah. Uh, so I don't know. I don't, I mean, have you talked to department heads at all?
I, I shared this with them. I got no feedback.
I, I mean, in my opinion, I, I, I share, I mean, you know, there's a lot of workplace instances where folks meet. Um, they marry, they meet, they're dating. You know, I, I don't know how you can prevent that. However, however, there should be, um, some, you know, they should have to sign something where, you know, I, I, I mean, and I've seen this before in other, other states. You know, see, I used to come from, I know that. You know, when there was a, a, a husband and wife that were hired by the same company, company, the husband worked there, the wife didn't. And they wanted to hire her, they had to sign something legally that said, you know, I don't know what exactly it said, but I, I do recall that. Um, you know.
Smoking in the workplace.
Well, no, it, it's, it's, it's a, it's an understanding that, you know, they can't come back onto the. The organization and say, well, you know, I was harassed. They're dating or they're, they're married. Um, so. It outlines, and again, I don't, you know, I'm just throwing this out there. It outlines. Um, the context of their relationship so that people know about it and. You know, it protects the employer, I would think. But again, I'm just throwing that there.
It is a problem. I mean, if the relationship fails, and you have hostile work environment claims and everything else.
But they can't, if they sign something, they can't. I would think we'd be protected. But I mean, there are people that, that do meet and they marry in the workplace and they probably don't want to lose their jobs. You know, um, so it is, I, I would imagine it is an issue.
I do have one public comment, uh, from somebody on Zoom saying it should be up to the supervisor to manage. Any inappropriate behavior between two romantically involved employees in the same department. I think that that does, uh, have some merit in the sense that we are looking at, uh, performance, uh, evaluations and. Um, so I think it, it does like what, so what Linda's saying as far as getting something signed, like sign. Whether that's in a review or not.
Couple of quick thoughts as somebody who has a department of fifty people. Right now. Uh, as Aaron kind of alluded to, and Aaron, apart from me for quite a while, so Aaron's got nothing to know. Uh, we had, uh, quite a few, uh, folks who, uh, worked for the Indian Home Service, a lot of getting married. Um, they're still married to this day. Uh, I, I do have a combination of, um, spouses and children. Um, who, uh, worked for the Indian Service. Um, currently, uh, the way that we deal with that is first and foremost, say that. Uh, it does not prohibit it, um, hiring volunteers, but it does prohibit it that we supervise them in the future. Uh, and I think that is, um, I, I think over the years and I've had this situation. Been about twenty years. Uh, I, I really think that, that that kind of covers it. Uh, I think you get into slippery slope, um. You know, you start talking about. Uh, I don't know at what point I have to become a dating police. Um, and then there's the question of, well, if some people start dating, I mean, now we terminate people because they're. Um, involved in a relationship. Um, and I mean, you know, as I said, currently I have people now who are born the same day. And we have people who are dating, um, across the lines. So I, I think this. Just my.
So John, why you did, I'm glad you got up here. I thought I'm going to ask you to come up, because you know. Very unique situations of, of being a director and, um, so many employees. Do you find it? Or the percentage or the, I'm not really concerned. I don't know what I'm looking for. Do you find it hard to manage? A situation like this, or have you had difficult situations like this? I guess I'm trying to put something in place. I had to help my, the directors in line in the town. You know, what would be the verge that would help you guys manage the employees?
I, I, I think again, I think it'd be safe to guard, um, you, you know, again, and, and we as parents, we're, you know. The way that we work is as paramedic on a truck and a new team in the truck and, and a paramedic is, is the crew chief and such. Um, we generally try and avoid scheduling those folks together. Um, I always judge that for something out of a sense of duty because. I don't want to be the one, as I might work in on a truck that turns over and something bad happens and. Um, you know, I, I think to avoid that supervisory, um, relationship is, is, is key. Um, you know, I, I don't think how we can clean up all the land with. Because we. I'm, I'm not gonna lie, we've had, we've had issues where relationships have gone bad and it does clean up the work place. And. I don't know what the roots of that is.
I don't know your lives.
It, it's, it's a tough situation.
Yeah.
Well. I. I'm not that concerned about. Again, if, you know. I don't know if you can make them sign something to the extent that, you know. They're, they're in agreement that they're in this relationship voluntarily or something. So it's not, doesn't ever get to a. You know, a situation where, uh, it may never, you know, where. It gets ugly. I don't know. It's hard to cover. It is.
I mean, in, in a department like ours. In a department like ours, we just avoid it. We just, we just simply say.
Yeah. Alright. Yep. Um, I would, I would make a motion that we approve, um, changes, um, to the chapters one through two of personal policy. Chapter four of chapter two and chapter five, section five, section four of chapter two and section five of chapter two. And not adopt a section seven.
So, so, so in the, in the draft policy that you have, there's actually no changes, section seven, chapter two. I was just raising the question and so. If, if we had a motion just to adopt it as a reason, and I think it covers all the changes, which are mostly. Uh, grammatical.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All in favor? Alright, moving on to item twenty-six, discussion of town managers' job description tabled from March fourth.
Can I go first?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I find, I find it to be just fine. I wish it was a little more. Objective or, but that would be a very difficult thing. But I think it is pretty much covered. I think it's, and it's, it's a good job.
Any other discussion?
I'll like it.
Alright, the chair will enter into a motion.
Make a motion to accept the town manager's job.
Second. All in favor? All in favor? Moving on to item forty, consideration of those recent parts.
Remember that, Anthony.
Thank you, Andy.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
So, so Jim did ask one question. I think it'd be helpful for the whole, uh, council to hear. Uh, about the disbursement warrant. He wondered why there was a separate, uh, payment for insurance for the library. And my understanding is, is that back. Several years ago, there was a town manager who. Um. Didn't like the fact that there seemed to be some separation in the governance of the, of the town library. And so, uh. Didn't think the library should be on the town's, uh, insurance policy with MMA. And so, um, the lawyers looked at it and determined. Yes, in fact, they, the, the library was, needed to be separate and apart from the town in that sort of way. And then ended up costing taxpayers additional monies, uh, in doing so, because the MMA has a great insurance program. When you consider the, the plan. From which it, it draws. So, uh, and.
We look at getting that back.
Uh, and it all relates, Roy. It, it, there would be, but it all relates to how the charter for the library. Is drawn up. And so that's the founding document that they went back to and looked at and making this determination. So. Um. So just let that be a lesson to us never to get our knickers in the knots.
Okay, moving on to item twenty-eight, consideration of recommendations from the appointments committee tabled from March fourth, twenty-four.
Can I go first? The first issue here is that. I, I know that the town. Charter. Says that there will be three appointments to that district and their appointment periods. Be one year apart. So we can't appoint two people with the same term expiration. One of those terms will have to be adjusted. Yeah, but we got three appointments. We have multiple applicants, Winthrop's district board trustees, terminated by three thirty-one, twenty-five.
Yes, but.
Right.
Twenty-five, twenty-seven. Two years apart.
Yeah, yeah, Roy's correct. There's only, there's only one appointment, but we received multiple applications for one of them.
So that, so that. I'm, I'm not going to approve. Any reappointments or new appointments unless these people are open minded. To an expansion of the utilities district. Now, I am aware of the menu, that order was sent out that they bound out, so. Had a. We. Tell me, Anthony, we, we.
Yeah, so back in nineteen eighty-six, uh, the town council did, uh, as did the utilities board, did, uh, approve a motion in keeping with state law. To, to decide whether or not they wanted to look at expansion or not, and both of those bodies decided not.
But as, as we more recently said, Andy, we could change that. We could change the penalty, dude.
I think, don't, don't use my words against me, Andy. So, uh, so, so, yeah, I mean, uh, you know, uh, we'd have to check into what the legalities are, but yeah, I think if both boards decided they wanted to take a different path. I think that's probably an option.
I think, I think that would be, you know, a worthy venture to think about, especially as we're looking at potentially, you know, soliciting. Development.
Yeah.
Um, especially if they're willing to take on some of the costs. Uh, but second, were they, uh, did they bring to show up?
Yeah, so, so most of them were not available to come this evening.
Larry did, however.
Yes.
It'd be good to.
Yeah, 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 y'all grill them.
Roger Hanson is also here, so. It would be good to, uh, I know Andy had some questions last meeting and we postponed it because we didn't have answers to them and.
Yeah, so that, that would be a lot of.
Well, they've, they've taken the time to come up here, so I'd like.
I'm fine. And my, my biggest concern is that should we change our position on expansion?
How many, how many?
Roger and.
Larry.
Larry, if you're open, uh, to looking for grass and considering the idea of expanding. In areas where we might have new development.
Can you use your side?
So what's your question?
Uh, Andy was just, he had some, he had some questions the last, at the last meeting. It's why we postponed until this meeting of, uh, having to do with the expansion. And both, are you open for the expansion or would you support the expansion of the, of the sewer lines and water lines?
Well, I guess I can't, I just can't make a decision.
Right, but, you know, there's a. There have been discussions in the past with some of the people, uh, that they're just completely closed minded about it, I guess. Uh, about. Uh, try to find a way to, uh, expand those two, uh, just give it this.
Well, you have to look into it, you have all detail, you know. But I guess that's, but. I guess that's the question. I mean, if it's a, I don't believe in expansion, then I couldn't support it, but if it's, I will keep an open mind. Okay, that's what I'm saying, you know, I don't get away with it if you have, you have the detail, so. Thank you very much.
Larry, you've been around, uh, for a little while. Up on High Street where they have that water tank. The development of, she's finishing inside that neighborhood there. Was there ever any consideration, you know. To that water tank being there? Uh, when it came to building, how it looks, pulling it right into it?
I think you're still using that.
Okay, so you don't know if there's actually water in the tank, so.
I do not know that, not for sure. I, I think, I'm, I'm, I, I think it's not being used.
Okay, so that would be the other thing I would do. If you, if we were to consider your occupation. Would be that the, A, that if it is being used, that there be some type of monitoring, like situation. Uh, going to monitoring and the plan, um, to protect the houses that are involved.
Well, yeah, that's a great, yeah. Yeah. I think that doesn't.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. So I'm ready for the answer?
Hello? Andy, did you have questions?
Yeah, Roger, Jeff, based, you know, everybody should know that we know each other. Uh, and I have every confidence in your ability to be reasonable and be a good. Uh, judge things and to manage things. My big concern is. Up until this time, we've gotten a solid recalcitrant. Know from the idea of expanding in order history. And that comes against the grain of the last couple we ended up winning. And probably this one too. All I'm really going to know is. If you would have an open mind towards expansion when it comes to looking for markets, trying to find ways to pay for it. Uh, working in a community in that, in that way. Well, can you be a little bit specific about this expansion? That's why we, we can't even, we don't know. You know, the developer is going to come up in a big lot up behind Turkey and they even say, I want to develop, you know, on our homes up there. There's no water line, a half acre lots. You gotta have. Subiquage, you're gonna, you're gonna have to work the fire and then. So that's the thing. And I, I know we're costing a million dollars a mile in sewer, but. You know, they're looking at grants. I just want to know right now, what it is, you go to Winthrop Water District and you say expansion. They all go their hands up in the air and tell you, not going to happen. Okay, and I just want to know, you want to do one of those tests? Well, all depends on how you place for that. So, uh, last thing, last thing you want is everything's happening, possibly expanded. So my experience is there's a gas, electric, drilling business. Where. That's, uh, that, that ongoing tension that occurs, it's revisited by regulators, customers. Every so long, you know, first, you can see in these days, things have changed since I retired. You know, the company pays for solubilization, the cost of heaters and, you know, service drop. But the customer has to pay for the extension. And it's very similar in the gas industry. The whole idea is that there should be no substitution. Uh, uh. That expansion by. On a better customer, ensuring there is socialization with them. So that would be my, that would be my thing. Make sure that other districts are not affected. So if there are grants. As long as there's a lease, they are, they will support that. I don't really know a lot about the water supply. I know. One other current issue is that our dwelling units. From on the water line to, to, that's why our vision is so out. So I've been told anyway. But you do seem like you'll talk about it, you have enough in mind. Yeah, so that's, that's all I need. Thank you very much. Unless anyone else has a question?
Thank you very much, Tyler.
Actually, a question, not for him, actually, it's the Jim. So two, two things that we're thinking about here include reappointments. And renovation, uh, see.
Yes.
Two different. And then did, did anyone, do we have anything from Don or?
So, so, so he's in South Carolina right now and, uh, and unfortunately Carrie lost the family member last week and so. Um, you know, Roy had mentioned to me about possibly tabling this and talking those two books at the next, at the next meeting.
And, and unfortunately, it would be nice to hear from them as well.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Uh, but I will note, we have two other appointments. So if you intend to reappoint Don Holly. That's something you could act on tonight. And, and, and the same thing with Michael Demings' appointment to the zoning board.
I'm not.
You're not ready?
I'm not ready.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming in tonight. We are going to table this to our next meeting.
Yeah, that, that requires a motion as well.
Yeah. Uh, a motion to table the appointments, uh, looks to be on the page, uh, for next meeting.
Second.
All in favor to table? All in favor? Moving on to other goodness, I will open it up for a couple of comments.
Thank you, Roger. Thanks.
No comments on Zoom? No comments in the room? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the town managers' report.
Okay, so this afternoon, um, signed an agreement with mainland engineering. They're going to be here on April the third. In late in the afternoon to look at, uh, Spruce Street, Hillside and High Street. And offer us some, um. Proposals for keeping water, uh, off the. and offer us some, um, proposals for keeping water, uh, off the roads, uh, and in the ditches. So, uh, anyone who's interested, see me afterwards. I'll give you the details if you want to come by and be part of that discussion. And it was a cost of approximately, uh, anywhere from, uh, twenty-two hundred to twenty-seven hundred dollars. So that was right in the ballpark of which all. Yeah, you can do that via Google or Google Earth, Google Maps. I'll send you some screenshots. As I think you all know, last week we submitted the application for the hometown branch from T-Mobile in order to do the AV upgrades in the, uh, the library meeting, excuse me, library event space. So keep your fingers crossed. We should know something in, I think, May. Um, we also signed the contract for the AV in this room and so that we, we're told that that project should be done by the time school ends. So that would be fantastic as well. I've had a couple of people ask me about, um, the possibility of having a panhandling ordinance. Um, I think there's been a few more people on the streets and a few people who've been at points rather aggressive in approaching people, uh, at different places in the downtown area. Is that? Say it again?
Oh, really?
I went, following right into the historical society the other day.
Yeah.
We're in there doing some work.
I believe the city of Portland is at this issue when they were struck down.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, well, if it's something.
Or can be trespassed out of, uh, non-public right of the, because they tried to get them out of the media.
Yeah, well, there's a safety issue involved there.
They still, the court still said, you know, they had the right to be there. Yeah.
Yes, gee. Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, so no interest in a panhandling?
I mean, you could, but I don't think it's enforceable. I think right now we have to go out with trespassing or.
Well, I mean, it's something I could ask the town's attorney about if there's any interest.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Okay.
Especially seeing the aggressive, so, uh, a couple of encounters and certainly I would, I would recommend and definitely what was listed on Zoom to make sure that I made my choice of these products so we can handle that.
We were after hours with a close sign of the letter and, and the lady accosted me in the market while I didn't follow me around the letter. I'm glad that there was someone else in here because you haven't kind of shown.
Well, when, when someone puts your hand on you, that's all, all games are off. All bets are off.
So, so the, um, in a surprise move, the, uh, the Reed Field Select were, uh, declined to participate in the, uh, housing opportunity grant that we have submitted by a three-two vote. Uh, despite the support of the town manager and the chair. So I have talked to the, uh, Monmouth Town Manager about, uh, the possibility of them partnering with us. Unfortunately, we had already submitted the application. Yeah, we, uh, and so, um, I'm gonna double check. I'm gonna double, I'm gonna double check with Manchester to see if there's still a go, but, uh, so that may change our, our application slightly. Uh, if we're awarded something, we'll, we'll work with the Department of, uh, Community and Economic Development on that, just FYI. Um, I emailed this to you folks late Friday, but the, uh, the proposed county budget is alarming. From interior, one is the cost of going up significantly, twenty-two percent. But additionally, they made a very bad decision last year to use one-time revenues, their fund balance to, uh, cover a five million dollars worth of operating cost. And now guess what happens?
You know, that, that's, that's wrong. I mean, how, what do we, I mean, how can we do something about this? This, th- these county costs go up all the time and that's not, I, I mean, it's, it's, this is ridiculous. It really is.
If we invite our commissioner to our next.
Well, let me tell you, let me tell you what I'm gonna do. So there's, uh, there are two public hearings that are scheduled in which we can share our opinions. One of them is tomorrow night at six o'clock in Waterville. And then the other one, I believe, is on March twenty-seventh, but I plan on attending both of those. And the case I'm gonna make is, listen, you guys made a really bad financial decision with that last year. You should really go back and try to scrub five million dollars from your budget. Now that's awfully hard to do, but nonetheless, it, it would be the right thing to do. Secondly, they need to listen to their county administrator who is very, uh, a financially savvy person. He was previously the, uh, chief financial officer of our prison system. So he knows a ton about governmental budgeting and warned them about this and they did it anyway. And thirdly is to, um, appoint, uh, some people who are knowledgeable about government budgeting to their budget committee. So two years ago, I served on that committee along with Sarah Fuller. And together we were able to discourage people not to do that two years ago. Neither one of us was on that body last year and, and we see what happened. So, so they need people who know what they're doing so that they're not willingly trying to realize a one-year gain and then there's a double whammy the year after that. So that's gonna be my case.
The thing, the thing is, is these guys don't have, I mean, it, it, it appears that there's no respect for the pocketbook. Um, and you know, if someone's willing to, to put this out, five million dollars, what are they gonna do next time? Ten million? I mean, what, 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 what are our, our options here in terms of even giving anything over to these guys? I mean, I know that the, the jail system we use, but what, I mean, what is the, what is the, what are our options here? Because I, I just think that, you know, this is an open pocketbook.
To be a little more specific, I, I, do you know, when I wasn't able to look and figure out where are these expenditures that increased?
I, I did not, I went straight down to, to find out how it was gonna impact our, our community and, I mean, our, our county appropriations increasing by like forty-five percent.
Cause I'm a C S O controlling our town, right? So if that's a substantial increase, then I would kind of, I, I would really want, would like to see Joe Chroski come to our meeting and, uh, discuss this.
Oh, we, we, we can certainly, we can certainly invite him, but, um, but anyway, so just to let you know, I'm gonna do that Tuesday night. Uh, I sent the email to you guys and so you can take a look at what the dates are Tuesday night and the other night. And so if you can come, I think it, it helps. I mean, that's, that, you ask, what's our, what are our options? Our options are to try to appeal to them that this is not.
I'd like to see where their budget is and what they've spent the money on.
Yeah, well, I, I, I've emailed it and, and the good news is, we won't have to worry about this again for a few years because their fund balance is depleted. So they don't have, they're not gonna be able to raid the fund balance in order to cover operating.
No, cause they'll just raise costs on us.
That's true.
Yeah, no, that, that's ridiculous. This is, you know, we've got to send a message. I mean, this is not okay.
I spoke to Joe Chroski today.
Yeah, what's he done?
And as you've done, well, I think you're gonna find these kind of on our side, okay, okay, he's gonna be supportive.
Supportive, but is he gonna be outspoken on this stuff?
Joe?
Yeah.
Don't be outspoken. You don't know Joe, you're the question asking.
So, uh, we also received today from the state, a, uh, uh, the boat ramp replacement grant application has begun and so we are going to begin, again, working on an application to replace the Marana Cook Lake Boat Ramp. So that'll be good. Late this. Must you?
I know, really.
The, the region is still open to giving up what area they might have left. And the last time we signed this, it was crucial that we had no emergency. That's it.
Okay. Um, late today, I sent to you the, uh, the most recent iteration of the municipal budget. It does include a five point one-three percent increase. However, I think there are some opportunities to reduce that by making some smart use of, uh, the nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that we didn't spend last year that is, that was, has not yet been appropriated, plus whatever that we might have as, uh, surplus revenue this year.
This doesn't include the school budget though, correct?
This does not include the school.
Yeah, but if we use that revenue this year to reduce what you're proposing, then the following year.
No, no, no. Well, I'm talking about using it for capital cost. So whatever capital, whatever one-time expenses that we have. I mean, some of that you may, you're, you're gonna probably, well, you're definitely gonna want to stash some of that into capital reserves. You know, depending upon what, what your priorities are. And there are lots of different options. But there may be some items that you want to cash fund this year from, you know, um, and so it's gonna be a matter of determining when we sit down to look at those capital items. What is it that we may want to purchase this year versus lease financing over the next three to five years? So, so that's one way to, to reduce that, uh, that increase. But those have been delivered to you via your email. Um, our first, our workshops begin on April the second. And in the meantime, as you look through those, as questions arise, let me know and then we'll do our best to, to try to provide you the information so that you can make good decisions, uh, with that. There is a civic group in town that contacted me a couple of weeks ago and they're interested in removing that pier uh, at Marana Cook Lake. And so they are working with some contractors whom they think can get, will be, will be, may be willing to do that for us on the cheap. I know you're laughing, Jim, but keep hope alive. Keep hope alive. And then lastly, uh, at our last meeting, uh, you folks were gonna, um, let me know how much money I have to deal with as far as providing, uh, pay raises for, um, uh, for non-union employees, uh, including directors. So I'm interested in, in your thoughts.
Based off of some of the numbers that we've discussed before, uh, we've come back with twenty-seven thousand.
I, I can work with that.
Well, I'd like to know, how many people are we talking about?
Well, I, I don't know the number, but it's the, it's the same ones that we discussed.
And what, what percentage, what percentage?
It will be based, it will be, not, not everyone will get a pay raise. It will be based on merit. So, so, so some people will get very low raises, some people get moderate raises, some people will get.
Will get what?
No raises, zero raises.
So there'll be some, but when you're talking about moderate raises, what are we talking about?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of three percent, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. Nothing exorbitant, I promise you.
But I think when we looked at the numbers, I think it was equivalent or actually cost saving.
Now, this is, this is their raise. This isn't an addition to the, uh, cost of living.
This is, this is, this would be the, um, yeah, there, for these people, it would be a merit raise. There would be no cost of living adjustment.
But is there a cost of living adjustment in the budget for them as well?
No.
Okay.
It's just.
Alright.
No, no, actually just a comment. Uh, we went over all this last time around and we kind of all agreed on that figure. And to continue to be, ask and answer, one house is gonna do, it would be my manager, when the situation is, so I, I think, you don't like this number, we don't.
Well, I had, I had some questions I liked answered, so that's it. I got my answers.
Feel free.
No motion.
Alright, and I believe this will, we'll move into an anxiety session, so.
I know that we move into exactly such an, uh, person to one, MRSA, uh, section four, five, six, eight, on personal matters.
Alright, everyone.
Nobody have on the motion.
Alright, all in favor?